Good afternoon. I am going to call this to order this regular meeting of the Committee on the Whole for Wednesday, February 27, 2019. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair of this committee. And with me at the dais are Councilmembers Palmasano, Johnson, Goodman, Ellison, Schrader, Council President Bender, Councilmembers Cunningham, Fletcher, Reich, Kano, and Gordon. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. And we have three discussion items on our agenda today. In addition to the reports of the committees, we'll handle Items One and Two jointly as they are both related to the 2020 census. Item number one is the quarterly update on the city's 2020 census activities. And Item Number Two is the first slate of appointments to the Complete Count Committee. And I believe Ms. Mo, Karen Mo, from the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department, will be giving that presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Karen Mo. I'm Deputy Director of Neighborhood and Community Relations. First, I just want to say thank you so much for having me here today to present this update. I'm here with two specific action items. The first is to receive and file this presentation, which is an update on the city's efforts around the 2020 census. And the second is to ask you to approve the appointments to the Complete Count Committee. During today's presentation, I'll provide a brief update as to what we've been working on at the city, as well as provide you an update about the Complete Count Committee. And then I have a guest speaker here today, Bob Tracy from the Minnesota Census Mobilization Partnership, who is here to provide an update on state and federal legislation, as well as answering any questions about the citizenship question. With that, I'm going to try to slow down. I'm going to tell you, we've actually been doing quite a bit of work with the census. We've been spending a lot of time. And so I'm going to try to keep this to the time I've been allotted. So I'm going to try to speak fast and touch on as much as possible. The first thing I want to touch on is thank you to councilmembers. In the 2019 budget allocation process, you allocated resources to the city's efforts around the 2020 census. And I really want to applaud you and thank you for that. My understanding is that we are one of the leaders in that in the state. Again, yet again, we're one of the leaders with the amount of resources that we're putting towards this effort. One of the things that we were able to do with that dedication was to hire a project coordinator. I'm really excited that Alberta Gillespie is here today. And she started yesterday, so we're still getting her on board, including trying to get an email address for her. But once we get that, we will make sure to reach out to everybody so that she can have the chance to meet you. And she will be the coordinator, the lead coordinator for our city on this effort. This position will be in Neighborhood and Community Relations, but it's actually a shared position between our department and the Communications Department. So she will be moving our entire city forward once she's up and running. With that, she'll be working with the city staff team. The last time I was here, I think I let you know that there is a group of folks that are working across the enterprise on this. That includes Neighborhood and Community Relations, Communications, Intergovernmental Relations, Information Technology, Community Planning, Economic Development, Arts and Creative Economy, Race and Equity, as well as others. We meet on a monthly basis, and we both work together to identify what resources we can leverage, or what infrastructure is already in place that we can leverage to do this work, as well as identify opportunities to do more together. A great example of that is the election guide. I want to thank Casey Carl, the city clerk, who identified a great opportunity that we took advantage of, which was in 2018, the city sent out an election guide to all Minneapolis residents. We were able to get information in the election guide to all residents about the census coming. As well, we include information about job opportunities and a link to the website where people could go on and apply to the jobs. Another opportunity that we're working on is with the Arts and Creative Economy Office. We have applied to the Creative City Making Program, and we are in the process of selecting an artist or an artist team that will be working with us on this effort as we move In addition to that, we've been going out and talking to a lot of people. I think some of you have been part of those presentations. We presented at the Community Connections Conference. Council Vice President Jenkins was there. I think that was a good conversation that we had. In addition to that, we've been, I say we've been on a census tour. We've been hitting as many appointed boards and commissions as possible. You can see the list there that we've been to. And those have been fruitful conversations. We've been approaching different appointed boards and commissions and asking them how they want to engage with us in this work. Some examples I will share with you is the Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee has actually added the census as an ongoing agenda item to their monthly meetings. So we'll be going back there on a monthly basis. The Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Aging decided they wanted someone from their committee to be on the Complete Count Committee. So they actually have a representative on the Complete Count Committee that will be attending those meetings. The Homegrown Minneapolis Food Council was an interesting one. They invited us to come and present. It was a very lively conversation, and as a result of that, the Health Department, which was there, reached out to us and have now invited us to go out to three other infrastructures or networks that they have in place, including the Healthy Living Community Leadership Team, Healthy Start Community Action Network, and Cedar Riverside Partnership. So it's a great example of how we're using networks that are already in place with our community members, our community leaders, to get the word out about the census and figure out together how we can do this work more effectively. In front of us, the next big item that we're going to be working on is solidifying our communication strategy and messaging. We have been looking to other resources that are already in place, including the U.S. Census Bureau has a 240-page integrated communications plan. We've been reviewing that. We've been looking at the State Communications Plan, which has yet to be publicized, but we've been working with that office on identifying what we can glean from them. In addition to that, the Minnesota Census Mobilization Project has been working with grassroots solutions and community leaders from various undercounted communities. In the last year, they spent the entire year working on identifying what messages and strategies we're going to work with various historically undercounted communities throughout Minnesota. They then produced a communication and mobilization plan with recommendations regarding strategies and messaging. So we've been using that also to guide our plan. The city of Minneapolis is looking at this as a joint effort across the metro area. For many of our community members, they don't end their relationship with their family or their life doesn't necessarily end at government borders. It extends throughout the metro area. So we've been working closely with Hennepin County, Ramsey County, and St. Paul on both hosting meetings and developing ideas around our strategies and our messaging. The next update is regarding the Complete Count Committee. The last time we were here, we asked you to approve the establishment of a Complete Count Committee and then authorize us to start recruiting members to the Complete Count. In 2018, we spent our time building those relationships. And that meant a lot of going out and having conversations with people, with our current relationships and with others, and conversations around why the census mattered and why they should be involved in the city's effort around this. We have recruited folks. On January 17 of this year, we had our first meeting. Council Vice President Jenkins was there to kick it off. It was what I would call a soft opening to the meeting. We really focused on listening to community members, what their concerns and fears were with the census, and as well, what their hopes and wants were with the census. And then we also talked about moving forward, soliciting a real commitment to this work together as partners. We'll continue to do that as we move forward, and then we're going to start focusing again really on identifying what strategies and messages are going to work. To date, we've received 20 applications officially to be part of the Complete Count Committee. You have those before you, and I am asking that you approve those appointments. I want to be clear that this is not actually, all of the folks that have been participating with us, these are just the people that have actually submitted the application to date. So we are still working with other community members who are interested in being on the Complete Count Committee, who attended the meeting in January, and who are just working through getting the application through the process. With that, the next steps for the Complete Count Committee will be, again, to continue building out the members of that committee and then to identify co-chairs. We've already been having some conversations around who potential co-chairs could be to identify the next meeting, which will be coming up soon, as well as to work on our working relationship with other community-based Complete Count Committees. So what we're seeing is within some of our communities, such as the Latino community and the American Indian community, there's an interest in actually establishing their own Complete Count Committees or something like a Complete Count Committee. Our staff, Christine McDonald, our American Indian Specialist, Mariano Espinoza, our Latino Community Specialist, has been actively working with community members to identify what the structures are going to look like. And so we will be continuing working on those relationships. As well, I want to let you know that there is a statewide kickoff that the Governor's Office will be hosting on April 1, 2019. We don't have the details as of yet. As soon as we do, we'll make sure to let you know about those details. That's the wrap-up from the city side. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Bob Tracy, to give an update on state and federal legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. My name is Bob Tracy. I'm Director of Public Policy and Communication for Minnesota Council on Foundations. We're providing the backbone organizing support for the Minnesota Census Mobilization Partnership. The partnership is a network of approximately 250 organizations, mostly non-governmental, but really there's the umbrella to help bring people into the census work in Minnesota. We exist as a complement to what the Census Bureau is doing, and we work closely with the State Demographers' Office. Our work centers in three areas. We do advocacy at both the state and the federal level. Council on Foundations leads the state advocacy. I'll share more information about that with you in a moment. And we work in partnership with a group called MAX 2020, Minnesotans for the American Community Survey, on our federal work. Our secondary activities, we take on special projects that Minnesota needs. So Karen mentioned the Communication Mobilization Plan. We heard from the community, we needed a strategy, a communication strategy and organizing strategy that was unique to Minnesota. And so we pulled that together. Our next task is to respond to the other issue that the community raised for us, which is, we need to know you have our backs. We need to have some sort of legal support for communities and individuals who feel that they may be threatened through this census process. I should say, we were working on building an independent infrastructure for that, but now we're working just more closely, and we think that that infrastructure is our new Attorney General's Office. And finally, we're involved with engaging communities in the count itself, in enumeration. And to that point, that's really the focus of some of the state advocacy and also advocacy within the grant-making community among our members at Minnesota Council on Foundations. One of our immediate tasks is to raise $2.5 million to support fully inclusive, nonpartisan, and accurate count in Minnesota. What does that mean? We're raising $2.5 million to support networks that are specifically working with historically undercounted communities. So that's a private community, private sector investment. At the state level, we introduced legislation earlier this week. Representative Jamie Long is the lead author, seeking $2.5 million in state funds to really do several things. One, to engage hard-to-reach households. Specifically there, in greater Minnesota, we're talking about people who live by their P.O. boxes. They are not going to get anything in the mail from the Census Bureau. But in all areas of the state, and certainly in Minneapolis, we're also looking at a targeted effort to help us get into apartments. So in addition to funding, this bill also proposes extending to census workers the same authority that candidates for elected office have to access apartments. Secondly, there's funding in this bill to help us prepare for the first digital census. There's funding in this bill to help targeted efforts reaching historically undercounted communities. And there's funding in this bill to set up shared services. For example, it doesn't make sense for every community around the state to have to rely upon getting their own translation services. We should share that service through the State Demographers' Office. Status on that legislation introduced in the House, again, as I said, by Representative Long, tasked with support of the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, the State Government Finance Committee, the Government Operations Committee. It was introduced with 18 co-authors, half of whom were from greater Minnesota and half of whom were GOP members. It's also included in the Governor's Budget, not at the 2.5 level, but 1.6 gets the conversation going. And I'm having fun right now with our colleagues in the Senate. If you want to know more about what's happening at the state level, you can all go back to your offices right after this and look up yesterday's article in MenPost. It gives you a good summary. I have to tell you, every time I go out and talk with folks about the census, it's important in terms of Constitution and for many, many reasons. But I usually end up by saying, "And if none of that convinces you, at least do it for the babies." Infants and children are our highest undercounted population. I've learned my lesson because that actually became the headline in the story. So do it for the babies, folks. Finally, I want to shift to give you a quick update on federal actions. There was a significant increase in funding for fiscal year 19. So the congressional action a couple of weeks ago landed us with fiscal '19 funding $1 billion above what was recommended by the Trump administration. Most of those dollars are targeted for fieldwork. We're just now starting to prepare the 2020 appropriations. I was in D.C. last week, getting our delegation ready for the fact that it's going to be double what was appropriated in 2019. About $4 billion in 2019, we're looking at $8 billion in 2020. It's not a surprise. We're going to be hiring people, printing, and doing the census. And finally, the partnership has strongly opposed the citizenship question, both through the litigation process, but we're also encourage our congressional delegation to support initiatives such as the IDEA Act. And where appropriate, to take action with an appropriation to forbid use of any $2020 to implement a citizenship question should the courts allow to proceed. I'm available for questions. Otherwise, that's all I have to share with you today.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering if it's, how do folks who are in prison get counted in the census? And has that been calculated into the plan?
So people in prison, people are counted where they are sleeping on the day of the count. So people who are incarcerated are counted where they are incarcerated. There was an effort to change that in preparations for the 2020 census, and those advocacy efforts were not successful. However, you should keep in mind that states control the guidelines for redistricting, at least for state and local offices. And so that becomes an open question as to where individuals who are incarcerated will be counted for the purposes of state and local redistricting. And the Census Bureau, acknowledging that, has said that they are going to release their data earlier so that those states who may want to approach redistricting differently and how the incarcerated individuals have that data to work with.
Has there been any specific legislation around that that you know of?
I know that Representative Davney has a strong interest in this, and he's been looking at introducing legislation. That was before the session, so he's assumed other areas of focus since then, but he has the strongest interest.
Are there any other questions? No? You have more comments?
Nope, thank you.
Well, I will just, first of all, say congratulations to Ms. Gillespie. We're happy to have you in this role to lead the city's efforts. I did attend the first meeting of the Complete Count Committee at Sabantonie Community Center, and I think there were over 40 people there, and representatives from many cultural groups in our community, and many city staff were there as well. And so really grateful. I think it was a great kickoff to this effort. And, you know, I think it just creates more opportunities for us as a council to engage. I think so far today, we hope to approve these 20 applications, but certainly can encourage constituents to get involved and help us to make sure we're getting the most complete count that we can. I'm really concerned about the LGBT community and how they are going to be counted in the census. And so that's going to take a lot of outreach and community efforts as well. So looking forward to the Governor's kickoff on April 1st, and hopefully you can send that information around to myself and my colleagues so that we may be able to attend if that's possible. And seeing no more discussion, I would move approval of Items One and Two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those oppose, say nay. And that item carries. And I do want to note that actually, we were just moving to receive and file these two items, not necessarily to approve. So that item carries. Item number three is an update on the proposed charter change to require a biennial budget. And that presentation will be given by Micah Intermill from Finance and Property Services. Good afternoon, Mr. Intermill.
Excuse me. Good afternoon, Council Vice President Jenkins, members of the committee. Happy to be here before you to talk about this proposed change to the charter that's been offered by Councilmember Palmasano. So my plan for today is to give a recap of a presentation that I gave to the IGR Committee in January. At that time, the Council President raised a few very important questions that I'll also address around how a move to a biennial budget could impact community input opportunities into the budget process, and also how it might impact departments' work. To that end, we do have some department heads who are here to share their perspective directly. Our city coordinator, our city attorney, and I believe the Director of Public Works will all be offering their thoughts as well. And then I believe that Councilmember Palmasano herself has some thoughts to share after those pieces. So just to recap, our current budget process, which works, and to be clear, we have an annual budget process that's worked and has worked for 40 years. There's nothing broken that we're trying to solve. However, I think it can always be improved upon, and that's really what this discussion is about. In that current process, it's, the Budget Office develops current service-level assumptions for the enterprise. After that, departments take those assumptions and do some budgeting and figure out what they can do in the next year, put that up against what they would like to get done in the next year, and come up with some ideas for changes that they'd like to make. They propose those, then, moving to that yellow arrow to the mayor, who recommends, weighs those recommendations against each other, as well as some priorities that he or she has set out at the beginning of the year, and then puts together a proposed budget. And all of that is done by April 15, which is required in our charter. And then, as you all know, in that end of the year, fall into winter timeframe, council is hearing all of the mayor's recommendations, weighing those against their priorities, and ultimately coming to a final adopted budget. So it's really a system that stacked on top of itself becomes very repetitive. And I think that that's one of the challenges that we see is, I mean, even just looking at the slide, it's almost a little dizzying. And I think that that repetitive motion may cause some tunnel vision for decision-makers and sort of lends itself to, sort of, obscure the past by always focusing on the future. And so you're not taking some time to pause and evaluate, how are we doing? Are our resources being spent in the most effective way that they can? And so, you know, though I made the comment, nothing's broken, I think anytime you propose a solution, there has to be a problem, right? And so the problem statement here is, you know, we're spending too much time writing a budget in that perpetual motion of, you know, what are costs going to be? What do we want to do? How do we move forward? And we're not spending enough time budgeting, which involves more than that. It involves taking a look at, you know, the hard work that you've all been doing around setting goals and articulating values and stacking those up against the changing environment outside. And so I think that the distinction between writing a budget and budgeting is an important one that we can often lose. And I think that in that, you know, the point on this slide, that the production of a budget, which hopefully you all received earlier this week, received your three-ring binder full, the production of that budget and getting to that end is what's driving the decision-making timelines and not the other way around. At the same time, many of our departments, and I think that you'll hear this later from them directly, experience some burnout. And a department head during our budget hearings back last fall said, stood right here at this podium and said, you know, "Budget time is my least favorite time of year because I'm always up here begging for more." And I think that's not a good place for us to be as an enterprise. And then finally, as I mentioned, it really provides little room for planning and evaluation. We've got pilot programs that, you know, if something was approved in December, a department will be tasked, you know, they'll be receiving instructions on preparing the 2020 budget from the mayor next week. And, you know, there's no reasonable expectation that they could know how that pilot's doing by now before they have to start their process of asking for funding in the future. So this is then the proposed solution, that biennial budget. The first year of the biennial cycle, you see a process that looks exactly like you saw in the previous slides. In that second year, though, you see a little bit of room. I mean, there's space provided to do some of that thoughtful review and analysis of, are we where we went, are we where we thought we would be? Are we going where we want to go? And so in that second year, the Budget Office would be responsible for checking the assumptions that we had made the prior year, publishing revised estimates if necessary, evaluating some of the financial performance of departments in that first year to see if, you know, the current service level increases that were proposed are needed, if things need to be moved around. In Councilmember Palmasano's proposed language, there is room for a supplemental budget process that could be implemented on an as-needed basis. I think that the intent would be to not need that supplemental process, but I think the biennial budget that we all know the best is what happens at the state, and those who have been engaged in advocacy at the state legislature know that that supplemental process does happen pretty often.
Let me stop here. Mr. Intermill, do you have a question? Councilmember Gordon?
I didn't. I'm just wondering, who developed the current process that you're saying we're locked into following every year? Is that in the charter expressly stated like that?
Council Vice President, Councilmember Gordon. So the process that's outlined in charter, the process is actually pretty well-defined in charter. It doesn't say that, you know, it doesn't specify the form and format by which a mayor develops their recommendation, but there are specific, sort of, milestones called out.
So who then developed that current state of affairs? The first slide indicated. You had a dizzying slide you mentioned, and you, was that developed by the mayor and council last year?
So Council Vice President, Councilmember Gordon, I think that the situation I think that the situation that I portrayed is, sort of represents the two budget cycles that I've been through. And I think that, to the question of who has created that, I would suggest that we all have.
So, looking at this slide in front of us, what's preventing us from doing this slide right now based on the current charter? Seems like the current charter doesn't say we can't do any of that. We'd have our levy hearing, just like we would even if we changed that state law.
Council Vice President and Councilmember Gordon, certainly, we, so under a biennial process, very much to your point, we would still be required to set, the Board of Estment and Taxation would still set a maximum levy annually, the council would still adopt a levy annually. The charter currently does require an annual budget submission from the mayor. And so, you know, I think to the question, what's stopping us from following this process now? I think a mayor could request that departments, you know, propose a biennial budget, a two-year look at what they would like to do, but there's still that, there's still the unknown. I think that...
The famous eight-page report in August that Mayor Hodges got in trouble over, which was sufficient, would still be required.
That's correct.
And that would be the one thing that maybe we're not noting here, although we also say, well, here are mayor's budget. Okay. I just know that I've been through a number of budgets, and the current state of affairs isn't what every mayor wants to choose or every council. We didn't have a separate budget committee for a long time, there was Ways and Means, there's the year that RT decided he was going to do participatory budgeting, and he had a long series of community meetings before he even developed his budget, getting engagement. And then there was the year he was running for governor, where it was basically supplemental budget, and he didn't want staff to do very much because we were just going to keep going along and doing that. So, I just wanted to be clear that the current state of affairs is the current state of affairs as long as we want it to be the current state of affairs, and we don't have to change the charter and change the process. Mayors get to do that all the time. I think the current mayor, right after he was elected, he came in and he sent out a process to everybody that was new and different even than Mayor Hodges' process about what he wanted, here's the questions, here's what you should have in your proposals, and to do that. So, that was my point of those questions. Thanks for indulging me.
Council President Binder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also have, as I've been talking with our budget director and our finance director, asked a similar question, Councilmember Gordon, which is, how much of this can we do without changing the charter? So I think it's a good and important question to ask, one that I've been asking, too. I suspect, and would invite any feedback or comment from you or the department directors who might speak, who you said would speak soon. I think one question I might have if I was staff was, it's probably a bit more work to do a two-year budget than a one-year budget, and so I assume that part of what staff would want to hear from us if we went in this direction was, how is my workload, if my workload is going to increase to develop a two-year budget, is it actually going to decrease in that second year, or change in that second year, or am I just going to be asked to do, like, more? So develop a two-year budget, plus evaluate the budget in the off-years, but not really have any significant reduction in my work to prepare a budget. So, you can comment on that or not, but in my discussions I've been having with staff about this, that's more of a theme than the necessity necessarily of changing the charter. It's just, is there a commitment from policymakers that if we want to go in this direction, we are actually committed to the part where we might have slightly less writing a budget type work, so that we are freeing ourselves up for the evaluation and budgeting type work that was described?
So, I appreciate the opportunity to respond to the comment. So, yes, I wholeheartedly agree that that sort of, that commitment is important, because without that, it could create additional redundant duplicative work. I think to Councilmember Gordon's point, the process has changed over time, sometimes every year, and that has created a lot of angst in departments. And I know that they feel that, I feel that from them, and I think you all understand that, too. And I think that, you know, financial planning is not an area in which you want to have a lot of unpredictability. And that's really the situation that we're describing, is sort of unpredictable and a little bit chaotic, and so I think, you know, not to speak for the council member, but I think that that was some of the intent in introducing the ordinance to change the charter in this way, was to add that predictability. And I think the other point I would make to this is, you know, one of the additional benefits that are listed on the slide is, you know, a better alignment of the appropriation cycles with our financial planning. Last year, during the council markup of the budget, Councilmember Schrader brought up very good questions around the mayor's proposed affordable housing investment, and what really is going to be the outlay of capital. You know, we're appropriating a sum in the first year, and we don't know it's going to, or we know it won't be spent in one year, it'll be spent over multiple years. There's a difference, anybody who's purchased a home knows that there's a difference between being pre-approved for a mortgage and actually signing on the dotted line. You don't get those keys until you sign on the dotted line. And so I think for departments, that's another benefit to having those two. The alignment of the financial plan and the appropriation cycle is that they are able to do work differently to implement all of the programs that you all are funding through the appropriations.
So, Mr. Intermill, I have a question regarding the evaluation. Is it, is there a plan for the evaluation? Is it a more robust process beyond our current results in Minneapolis? How do you see that playing out?
Council Vice President, it's a great question. So, I think it's a both-and. So, this year, under Chair Palmasano's leadership and Vice Chair Fletcher, they've challenged the results team and the budget team to better integrate our results Minneapolis and budgeting. And so, that will occur this year by way of holding results conferences in the context of the Budget Committee. And so the intent there is to start to talk about our current service level and the dollar, the 90% of our budget that we really approve without too much discussion, talk about how that 90% delivered for us. So that's part of the evaluation. I think the second part of the evaluation, not to get too far ahead of the coordinator's office, but Andrea Larson, our Director of Strategic Management, has been working with What Works Cities to start to investigate what a program, a true robust program evaluation function would look like at the city. And so, I think that that is something that we'll likely hear about, if not this year during the budget process, the next year. You know, if we're not able to resource that function internally, it may be a future request, but it's definitely something that's on our radar. In addition to, you know, there's program evaluation, but then there's also different financial evaluation that could be done, financial analysis that could be done through the Budget Office, given that sort of additional staff capacity that would be freed up by setting aside that budget writing every other year so that we could do the financial analysis.
Okay. You can go on with your presentation?
So, to the council president's question about community input opportunity, so our current state, as I see it, is, you know, there's ad hoc community engagement that you all conduct in your wards. And I was very pleased last year to give a budget presentation in Ward Four, happy to give a budget presentation in Ward 13, and, you know, that offers on the table to go to any ward and have those conversations. But those sorts of activities and the communications that you do aren't captured on this slide. What's captured on this slide is sort of that charter reaction to those signposts that are in the charter. And so, the mayor, I think community is reactive to the mayor's recommendation, that comes out in August, and community is reactive to the state of the city, which is really that, what charter lays out is the beginning of the budget conversation in the spring. And then, on the council side, traditionally, the hearings have been at the very end of the council deliberation process. This year, or in 2018, that was changed with the addition of one more hearing in early November, but it was still sort of towards the end of the discussion. And, you know, I think that putting, setting the engagement in that reactive capacity will always create an adversarial environment with winners and losers, because even if two people agree on the outcome, somebody may have given up to get there. And I think that that's, that is something that can be improved upon. And so when I think about a biennial budget process, how that gets changed is that in the off-year, you know, there's potential for community dialogue that informs that next budget for the next two years. And so, that community dialogue could happen with departments prior to their proposals to the mayor. When I think about some of the highest-profile policy changes that have occurred in the last several years, such as the workforce protection ordinances that we've put into place, those were really, those were product of strong partnership between active and engaged community and city staff coming together to say, this is what we think can work. And I think that that's something that we could see more of in this biennial process. To Councilmember Gordon's point, I think every mayor has and will do community engagement differently around developing their budget proposal, but in the two budgets that I've been a part of, both with two different mayors, both have incorporated community ideas into their budget. And I think that we will see, you know, there's greater opportunity there to be more planful and develop sort of a robust program as opposed to a one or two off-shot. And then, you know, through council markup, I know in many conversations with several of you last year, between those hearings, the first public comment hearing in November all the way through budget adoption, talking about how can we, how can we be responsive to what community is feeling and what we're hearing? And so I think that as there's more time to have more discussion with community, you all do a fantastic job of representing them, and I think that that will continue to create, as this says, a stronger focus and better results, because we don't budget for the sake of budgeting, we budget for the sake of results.
Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, just kind of to go off of Councilmember Gordon, and also kind of reiterate the council president's question, my, I think this is a great idea, but how much do we need to do, how much can we do without changing the charter? And I guess my question to add on to that is, you know, what's the advantage? What advantage do we get by changes through the charter and kind of the flip side, too? Like, what risk does the city assume if they're doing it that way?
So, Council Vice President, Councilmember Schrader. I think, so the risk that we would assume, as the council president called out, is that sort of unpredictability and potential for sort of whiplash. And I think that without whiplash, you know, regardless of the individual actors and intent in all of those things, so not placing any value judgment on how individual department heads would react, it's human nature to start to get tired and defensive when the rules of the game are continually changing. And so I think that's a risk, if we were to try something and then have to pull back from it. So, in putting this in charter, we would have more stability there. So that would be then your benefit. To the question of, you know, how much can we get done, you know, I've talked about a lot of good things that we could do with our budget process, and, you know, I'll offer that my commitment, as long as I am budget director, is to continue to make, to do it better. And so, I think that in changing the charter to require a biennial budget and create that space not only for the, my division, but also departments, that's sort of our home run swing. But, you know, there's more than one way to score a run in baseball, and there are some small-ball things that we could do incrementally to get to better understanding of our current service level, better structural opportunities for engagement with community, and things like that, of that nature.
Well, thanks, just to follow up, I think I get where you're going, that if this is set in charter, that, you know, there's no going back, there's no whiplash for staff, but I would also push back a little bit, that the flip side is, if there's a big call for change, you just have to close that door by going through a charter amendment. So, I'm just very curious about, and I think this will be an ongoing discussion, you don't have to answer it here, but I just, what parts can we be changing to try out to make sure this is as successful for staff as it can be?
Yep. So, Council Vice President and Councilmember, I think that's, points very well taken, and I think that there are a few different things that we could do. Well, one for sure is, any charter change, and I'll look to the city clerk to correct me if I'm wrong, but any charter change by ordinance, there is a contest period where folks could say, no, we do want this on the ballot. But secondary to that, you know, in just casual conversation the other day, now I'm looking at the city attorney, you know, she suggested one option may be to implement this with a sunset period, so we do have to come back and say, did this work for us? After, you know, say, two biennial cycles, so. So then to the...
Council President Binder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe we should just let you finish, but Councilmember Schrader's question reminded me that we hadn't really heard about how this would affect our, the park board, who I see here. And so, it's just kind of an open question. You know, if the city chooses to change how we're doing our budgeting, you know, it's a charter change, we're forcing a partner agency to follow the same approach, we do officially approve that budget as well. And I'm not sure that that was our intention. We're really talking about city-facing budgeting here. So, it's an open question, you could answer it, the council member, you know, I think as we talk about this going forward, I know we would all be interested in hearing from our partners at the park board.
So, not to speak for the park board, but I'll say anecdotally, my understanding is that many of the park board commissioners are supportive of the change, and the park board has been an active partner in the development of the draft charter amendment language. And I'm glad that there are lots of questions, this is an important, this is an important topic, so keep asking them. So, our...
Sorry, we have a question for you. Councilmember Gordon.
Could you just go back to that slide about the odd-numbered years? So, let's say there is a supplemental budget. The mayor then has to post the supplemental budget 30 days before the levy hearing? And is there also then another hearing when the budget's approved in December?
Yes. So, Council Vice President and Councilmember, the way that the language has been drafted sort of mirrors our current process, which is with a slight tweak. So right now, under current charter, the mayor has to propose a budget by August 15th, and then the BET must set a maximum levy by September 30th, which is currently the date set by general law.
So that's a little more than 30 days, so under the new thing, the mayor could actually do it on August 30th?
So, historically, it used to be that general law set the date for the maximum levy requirement at September 15th, and so we're just realigning that time period. And then the charter continues to require the hearings, both the truth and taxation hearing, which is legally required by the state to happen at the end of November, and then council's choice has been to require through the charter a second public hearing in, after that markup period and before adoption.
So if there was a supplemental budget, we'd still be required to have the three public hearings, so the odd year and the even year would be required to have the same number of hearings?
So, Council Vice President and Councilmember Gordon, even if the mayor does not propose a supplemental, there would still be those public hearings, because the hearings are on, the hearing in September is on the maximum levy that the Board of Estment and Taxation holds.
State required?
Yes.
Or all three of them state required?
Two of the three are state required, and the third is charter required.
Say that again, please.
Excuse me.
Discretionary. The first hearing held by the Board of Estment and Taxation is statutorily required. The truth and taxation hearing conducted by the council, which is the first of the two budget hearings we traditionally have held, is required by statute... two budget hearings we traditionally have held, is required by statute. The second public hearing we hold is discretionary. This council chooses to provide that additional level of input, and that second hearing is usually then done right before the adoption of the budget.
I apologize and appreciate the correction, but I think that highlights how convention can sometimes be confused with written rule.
Right. And we, this year, for example, had many more community meetings than other councils have in the past, and so we can easily ramp up requirements, and we could go ahead and probably do that to all of the staff that thinks this might be helpful to them on our supplemental budgets as well. We decide we need more meetings and more hearings and that as well. I appreciate that.
So then quickly, just going through department work as it stands today, and then I'll compare that to how that may change in the future. Departments really spend about eight months out of the year thinking about the budget. So, two, two out of every three months of the year, we're looking to what next year's budget will look like. So in the spring and early summer, that's the things I had discussed earlier around preparing that budget and meeting with stakeholders and really making sure that everybody understands the context around the requests. And then in the fall and early winter, it's about communicating what the mayor has recommended, again, not only with council, but also with, with community. And it's, it is a lengthy, lengthy process that takes a lot of department time, which is greatly appreciated by the finance staff. I think that in, from my perspective, and again, quickly, we'll hear from departments on what they think, department heads on what they think, but from my perspective, really this is about, as I said earlier, creating the room to implement some programs before we're starting to dig in and ask for the next. It's about creating that time to think, think differently about repurposing existing resources, rather than if we're sort of in a rushed position to, to figure out how we're going to get that new thing done, then the quickest answer is, well, we'll add more money. And then, you know, I really think just generally, providing more space for discussion invites more enterprise, enterprise thinking. And I think that's something that I've heard a lot over my short time here from council members, that they want departments working together. I've heard of a lot from our city coordinator about the need to de-silo, and I think that that's, there's more opportunity to work together when we're not having to meet our own individual deadlines all the time. So that's the point there. Any questions for me on that? If not, I would invite our city coordinator up to give her thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Intermill.
Thank you. My name is Naria Rivera Vandermeide. I'm the city coordinator. Thank you for having me here. I wanted to echo some of what Mr. Intermill had said, and I'm approaching my sixth, sixth budget year here in the city. And when I first came to the city, I have to say that as Department of Head for Regulatory Services, it felt a bit like rinse and repeat, that the process just had a life of its own. It was very rote. Mr. Intermill says we spent about eight months thinking about budget, and I would actually gather to say it's more. By the time a budget is approved in December, we're already thinking ahead to, what do we need to do either with business planning or with results? Because we use those results metrics in the budget, so we have to make sure that that's moving forward, so we know how that aligns, or in the past perhaps didn't align as much, to what we're going to put in our budget request. We had some pre-meetings, we had in previous iterations of the budget, to Councilmember Gordon's point, there's always a change in how we do budgets. And previously, we also had to think about what is our IT request, and that was separate from the budget, now it's more integrated, which is a good thing. But all of this to say that we spend a lot of time, and it's the same staff that's really thinking about it. In the meantime, we've gotten a budget approved, or we have new initiatives, and some of them have barely gotten off the ground by the time we're putting a budget presentation forward, whether it's new staff that need to create a job spec for, we need to post that position out, we need to hire somebody and get them onboarded. By the time a new staffer or a new initiative or a new office is getting started, we're often into spring or summer of a given year, and we're not able to think about what results of new initiatives are being thought of. In my new position, both as deputy and now city coordinator, I say that we have been working with the Finance and Property Services and Budget in particular to really align what, and change our performance management program. I appreciate the efforts of Councilmember Palmizano, who has really championed this change that we're doing with results, to really think about not counting widgets, but thinking about how our budget is transformative. If budgets are a reflection of the values that we hold as a city, then actually let's measure them as such, and measuring them as outcomes instead of outputs, I think is a step in that direction. But we don't often have time to do that. And I've been a long proponent, if you've been to some results meeting, I think I've mentioned it in every results conference we've had last year, of allowing us to spend time to program, to do program evaluation. Let us think if what we're doing is actually the core of our work or not. I appreciate Councilmember Goodman's, for example, thoughts on regulatory services and giving us pause to think about if the types of work and activities that they're doing, are they the right thing for us as a city in an era now where renters really are predominant throughout our city? What is it that our regulatory services is looking at? We ourselves have been looking inward in our department to say, what are the types of things we can stop doing because we value other things more? The shift to racial equity in all our work, I think, really involves and requires us to think about, let's talk to community more about this. It's not just about what the activities and the churn that we have to do as departments, but we have to take a moment to create space for community to share with us what the impact of our work is. To Mr. Intermill's point, the work of either paid sick and safe time or minimum wage would not have been possible had we not built in time to engage community to then say, this is what an ordinance should look like, or this is what a recommendation should look like. So, for me, the concept of a biennial budget, we can continue to do what we've been doing, and, and we certainly would, would do our work. We've been doing our work and I think really doing our best to serve the city. This would enable us to really be thoughtful and intentional about the quality of the work and the service that we're given in the city versus just writing a budget.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council Vice President Jenkins and council members. I'm Robin Hutchison, Director of Public Works. Director Intermill invited me today to say a couple of brief words about why we're encouraging this discussion on a biennial budget. I'm going to give you at least four reasons and then two examples why we're interested in continuing this discussion. Before I do the four, I just want to say that there's no month that goes by that we're not engaged in budget. The moment the budget is adopted, we have to start with our capital budget requests, which requires 30% design on our projects to get costs together to enter them into the forms, so it's immediate, there's no rest. It keeps going every month, and we love it, we do. That work is very satisfying work, but it is also, it's a lot of work for our staff. There's four really interesting things about a biennial budget. One is, to reiterate, the ability to adapt and evaluate. I'll use an example here. We were very grateful to have been awarded a position for a right-of-way inspector. We're hiring that position. We will not have time to evaluate, is it enough? Do we need to augment? Should we ask for that second one that we thought we needed or not? We won't know before we come back to the budget. We're going to either guess at it and just do what we did last year, or hold back, because we're not going to be sure. So that's one example. Second, that concept of adapting and evaluating, evaluation for us means more time for engagement. So how do we know if we're successful with a budget request? If we don't have time to ask questions of our community, was this successful? Did you see change? Third, the third and fourth reasons are really kind of operationally focused, so many of our operational activities in Public Works are based on five-year moving averages of what we've spent over the last many years, and whether we propose it for a one-year or two-year, there's probably not a lot of difference because we are basing on historical data of what it has cost us in the past to do this work, to maintain the level of service for the city. And then, second, for so many of our areas in Public Works, we, we're on a five-year projection already. So all of our utilities, we, we give you every year, five years of projection of what we think things are going to cost, and same goes for the capital program. So the difference between a one-year and a two-year in those areas may not have that much difference for what we propose to you and how you consider it, because already today, you see a five-year when, when we come to you. Maybe one last example I'll give you that reflects what a two-year cycle sort of looks like. In 2017, we were very lucky to have gotten an investment in the city's Vision Zero program with both a position as well as a, some funding for an action plan. It's two years later, the position is now full, the action plan is underway. It takes that long some times on some of the bigger initiatives to really get it underway, to be able to get it off and running and know what we need to propose next. So that has taken really about 18 months to, to get that moving as quickly as it is today. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you for a few minutes, and I'll be around for questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and council members, I guess I'm the representative of the small, small departments. Our annual budget, relatively easy, but there's a lot of back, back-room work and a lot of re-entry. There's just a lot of busy work that goes into it that takes up staff time. And I know the finance office, I mean, there's an awful lot of work that goes into producing this big budget. With regard to pilot programs and how long they take to get up and running, Micah Intermill has reminded me for the last few years that a pilot means it's temporary and at some point becomes permanent, but those things really do take time to get going, to get up and moving and decide if they are worthwhile. And also, if you're trying to hire somebody even on a temporary kind of basis, it's really helpful to be able to have some sense that you're going to be able to do that for two years. Another advantage I would see of, of having more of a two-year budgeting cycle is to really encourage interdepartmental projects. There was an experiment a few years back where we were expressly invited and encouraged to put together interdepartmental budget requests. It was really difficult and almost impossible by the time we got the budget instructions and the time, you know, what, a couple, less than a couple of months later, to really work on that. So that could be another real advantage of, of more of a two-year cycle, however you want to go about that. I think we, we want to work interdepartmentally. You know, our work, we work with, the police department, we work with, the health department, we work with, you know, on, on all these initiatives. But it makes it, this, this annual cycle makes it really difficult for us to accomplish that successfully when there's budget asks involved.
Councilmembers, my name is Julie Wiseman. I'm the Finance Director for the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. I'll just give you a brief update of the conversations that we are starting to have at the park board. We received a presentation from Director Intermill and Councilmember Palmizano. That was our first conversation. We held an additional conversation at a committee of the whole meeting, and we will have our third conversation with the board on March 6th. So it is definitely something that is being addressed and considered and talked about at the park board as well. And Brian Rice, our legal counsel, and myself have been working on the work group for the recommended charter revision language so that the park board is, comments are also included in there. The one thing I would say ditto to everything that everyone has said about the potential benefits of a biennial budget process, the other thing that I've been thinking about as I was sitting here, I've, I've been with the park board for 25 years, I've been the Finance Director for the last nine, so I've been involved in a lot of budget processes. And I think, I think one benefit that hasn't been talked about yet is that when you're doing a two-year biennial process, there's the ability to phase in major initiatives or major projects. So there's a lot of times where I've seen budget requests, budget requests come forward from departments, and there isn't enough money to do X, Y, or Z, and so it just gets denied. With a biennial budget process, it allows for conversation and discussion of moving that forward in kind of a phased approach.
Madam Vice President, colleagues, thank you for this time, and thank you so much for engaging in this with your questions. This process is nowhere near finalized or complete, and I want you to know that we are really still listening. I felt inspired to present, to put myself through the effort of presenting to our city council, because I feel like we should look at this from more than a staff lens. That lens is really important, but I wanted to offer thoughts that I didn't think it would be perhaps fair to ask staff to bring forward in a presentation to you, or just speaking to you in a, in a comment basis from the dais. I'm going to start and end with this same slide. Minneapolis's biennial budget process starts and ends in more public accountability than we have today. That is my assertion to you, and I hope that we've started to have more of that conversation today. I do want to point out that this is not the sexiest thing that's ever come before council. For some of you, I've had several conversations with you about this over the past year and a half, and you've probably forgotten. It's not the flashy or the emergency thing that we're going to deal with as a city council, but this is something I think that we can all do together. In fact, I think it would take that. And I think these are the lasting legacy kinds of things that we do to improve government over time. It's really important, so please hang in there with me for a few slides. I think it has huge ramifications in how our city runs, and I think these are the headlines under which we do our work, is the context of our city budget. From the public lens, how well is the city spending our money? It's about public accountability at the end of the day, and I think that's why they should care. I think that it's an opportunity to be more accountable, and I think that's why we should care. You'll have to excuse my not-as-polished-as-Micah's slides, but here's the three basic things I see that we do as a council member. We have a legislative role, we have a representational role, and our role is oversight. And to me, oversight is about governance, and to me, governance has, plays in big with our city's budget. If we're really honest with ourselves, how well do we do that oversight role? Is there an opportunity to do that better in our budgeting process? My passion, as many of you know, is about making local government fit modern needs, and sometimes that's tough, and you know this, because you have all done, we have all done structural reforms that take a lot of work. And it's those structural reforms of government that really matter, and they are some of the hardest kinds of undertakings. I see that right now, with the help of my vice chair, Councilmember Fletcher, we're finally being able to realign results Minneapolis and budget Minneapolis efforts. I can't talk about results Minneapolis today, that would make us go way too long, but please know they're there, and I'm eager to talk to you about them anytime. To me, a budget is about dreaming, it's about choosing what our priorities are and what they should be, and it's also a financial plan and a communication strategy. So my goals are, how can we listen better? How can we give more opportunities to participate? Every year is essentially a supplemental budget, is how I've experienced working as a city council member these last five years. I've noticed that we focus every year on really just what's new, without the time or space or ability in our annual process to dig more deeply into what exists today. You know, what's working or not, and how do we measure it? We spend $1.7 billion of money every year, and how do we know, and how do we go back and tell our constituents how it's performing? and tell our constituents how it's performing? This is a problem statement from a not-staff perspective, but from my own council perspective. I feel that we really only have time for that net new in our current budget process. I think our ability to make big decisions in our budget tends to be more reactive. They tend to be more with how we bring forward amendments to the end of a mayor's budget. And I think it lacks opportunities for real community engagement until the very end of the line, and some of those end up being very emotional and fraught, because I think there's built-up frustration in that. I think the mayor and the council's budget cycle ends up so short that we can make token changes here at the end, but not more meaningful, more impactful changes. And my perspective, I share some of Micah's thoughts, I also think, you know, let's just quickly examine the landscape. This isn't new to us. For 35 days of the government, the federal government shut down this year, this is all we heard about, on the news, in the paper, on the radio. My spouse, who didn't grow up in our American form of government, says, "Why do you do this? Why do you put a gun to your head and shut down the whole government? Why does that happen?" Well, he's British, and we have a lot to say about the British government right now. But the reason why we do this at a federal level is because it would take real structural reform to change it. I'm glad that this isn't ours to reckon with, but the point of this is that government budgets are really important to the people. Here's another example. I'm equating the Minnesota budget surplus and all the conversations around that to how we ourselves can sometimes get a bit myopic and hyper-focused on just the net new, and our budget is much more than that. The new items are maybe 5% to 10% of our city's budget every year, but the real meat, the real base of it is in that other portion. Peter Hutchinson, if you don't know who he is, he was a deputy mayor under Al Hofstadt. He was also the superintendent of schools in Minneapolis, and he was Minnesota's Management and Budget Commissioner. Myron Franz holds that role today. So I think his quote in this MinPost article is really important, because it talks about how it's diverting our attention away from the other pieces of the puzzle in a budget. Also, Minnesota, the state of Minnesota, does biennial budgets, and there is a shift of states across America that are moving to that model, in fact, or in some cases, they're moving back to that model. The third example is about something I think our department heads have covered pretty well, that some departments of our larger initiatives and some of the public face difficulty because of our annual process. If we say that we can make a program available for small grants, for example, it puts residents, our nonprofit partners, our community partners, at a bit of a loss. They don't know if that's going to be there the next year. They have to hurry up and rush or make a rash decision, because they don't know, there's uncertainty built into anything that goes beyond that. I think the park board had some great examples of this at their park board meeting, about how you have planning money, but you don't yet know how much to ask for in May of the following year, because you've really just gotten started. Some of these are different from a council member versus a staff perspective, and I really like Director Intermill's emphasis of outputs versus outcomes. But overall, I've been in collaboration with the Charter Commission on this for over a year. The mayor's office and the finance team started that conversation. We've been bringing in the Board of Estimate and Taxation and the park board into these conversations, because it really does take all of these pieces and parts. But I believe that a biennial model would help us to listen, and it would give us, as well as the public, more of an opportunity to participate. Just briefly, and I won't, you don't have to squint your eyes and look at this, this was just kind of a, here's the political process, here's where we're at now in it. As background, feedback that I've received from colleagues is that engaging the public is really important, and that process is kind of confusing. So that's why I outlined how this work happens as best I could in these chevrons. The rules of the Charter Commission require a public hearing on any proposed amendment, so the commission will receive the proposed amendment, and on Friday, I'm looking to substitute one with our group effort that includes Board of Estimate and Taxation and Park Board input into it. They will hold a hearing, they will pass it back to our IGR team, IGR will hold a hearing, and after that, there is an opportunity for the public to appeal that process and end up putting it on the ballot. But to interject here a little bit and respond to some of the comments that were said earlier, I too, at some point in this conversation, was in the position of, "Try it. How much can we just try? Let's just do it." Sure, I'll go down to the mayor's office and just try to dare him to start it right now. We have deeply scrutinized this and done a lot of research on how we would best do this. The advice from the GFOA, which is that Government Finance Officers Association, that our staff pay close attention to and try to live by their best practices, they firmly recommend the amount of time that it takes to shift models from an annual model to a biennial one, and they recommend that that have a horizon, a planning horizon on which to do so. Also, to Micah's point, our legal advice also would be to do this deliberately, even if it means to have a sunset clause in there, and that that might be the best way to try something like this. But to do that change in our city charter with a sunset, to see how that goes. Just quickly, engaging stakeholders, these are our intra-jurisdictional partners, and Councilmember Cunningham is on this list, because he's really picked up and participated with us during the weather that was almost like another planet and heaps and heaps of snow. We were still meeting here at City Hall with people from the park board and people from the Board of Estimate and Taxation. While Chair Clegg can't be present today with us, Barry Clegg, Chair of the Charter Commission, has been fully involved in this effort and has been really helpful in having those conversations with all of his commissioners as well. So we use the opportunity of the January Charter Commission meeting getting canceled to actually go and do a lot of consensus building and work. For this Friday, I offer before you, it looks kind of messy, but these are essentially what distills out to be the work group's improvements, the work group that is, that took place in 315 with all of those intra-jurisdictional partners. There's four main changes. What you have in front of you, the first two pages with the yellow highlighting, those are the changes from what we transmitted formally and unanimously as a city council on January 18th to the Charter Commission, plus these four changes that are outlined on this slide. The last page, that doesn't have any yellow highlighting on it, is a clean copy of what that then would look like. So I am looking on Friday to ask my colleagues to replace what we submitted on January 18th with the new clean copy, the last page of that three-page document. That would allow us to just have one clean version going forward, instead of needing to have a public hearing, say, at the Charter Commission that would have both, this is the Charter Commission's version, which Chair Clegg would be happy to take, but instead of having two different versions going, I am suggesting that we adopt this as this work group consensus piece. Other things that were valuable in those sessions aren't really captured in the language that you see in the markup. A lot of those, the value of that doesn't become charter language. One example of that was a lot of conversation about, "How might you add fiscal notes to our budget process in the future? How might we be more like the state, where, for example, we pass a major ordinance such as minimum wage or safe and sick time, all with the understanding that it would require more future infrastructure, and then that doesn't come before us ever again?" And council changes and priorities shift to having other kinds of new things. So those kinds of valuable things were part of that discussion, even though the charter language before you here looks a bit messy as a markup. Others ask, "Who else does this?" So our state government does this, and I've engaged a lot of lawmakers in personal one-on-one discussions about this, both brand-new lawmakers saying, "You know, as a freshman state representative, Jamie Long, Representative Mohamed Noor, how did this go for you? What kind of orientation do you get before your first budget?" And they, it seems like, don't have as, they have about as much as we do from that perspective. Representative Jim Daphne was another person I sat, is someone who has a lot of experience as a leader and a developer of a big chunk of the state budget, and he suggested that perhaps the biennial process has more stability, and that's something that we might see a benefit from at the city level. So other cities that do this include cities that are population-wise somewhat similar to ours in the top 100 cities by size and population. We end up falling in between Seattle and Oakland on this map. I did want to point out that the fact that Detroit, Michigan, uses the biennial budget process didn't initially seem like the greatest thing to stick in a presentation, but in fact, they have moved into doing this fairly recently, as they've been coming out of bankruptcy as a way to better manage, as a way to better manage that change. The stakeholder engagement on the charter amendment, this is just a review as to how departments, partners, and then the public would be engaged. I think we're finding common ground. I think we need to spend more time on the results work and the achievements and the goals and working with department heads, and I know that there is greater opportunity for participation in the biennial process. I think there's more opportunity in monitoring and follow-up questions. You know, "Here is this money, and what did you do with that?" Would be a good question to be able to ask departments, and I won't call out any specifically. I'm afraid we don't, in our today's process, really have time to go back and follow up. So those are my thoughts. We're nowhere near done with this, but I wanted to point out where we were in the process from my own perspective. There's still lots of public conversation to be had, and I'm still listening. So thank you for the time, Madam Vice President, and I stand for questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmisano, and welcome, Mayor Frye. Are there any questions or comments, discussion? Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do just want to offer a reflection, particularly, I think, for staff, which is that I think we heard a couple of questions about alternatives to a charter amendment, and so I just want to emphasize that, particularly in the short term, we may consider, you know, partnership with the mayor and our other agencies, talking about ways we might phase this in or try it out, or alternatives to a charter change, at least so that we have them to consider along with the proposed charter change.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just wanted to share that while I am a new council member, went through one budget cycle, I had worked in the mayor's office previously, and when I came down to this side of the hall, I was quite surprised about the process. I was under the impression that we would get a big book with the base budget and then also a book for the changes. I did not know that that didn't actually happen. And so I, in order to be as informed as possible, I really appreciate the space to be able to have additional conversations, and I really look forward to having more conversations about integrating program evaluation into it, as well as other analyses that we could potentially add. Within this first budget cycle that I had, I would say that I got to experience in very real time the adversarial nature that can happen during budget season, and how there were good things that were funded, but it was done in a way that was really harsh and challenging for a lot of people who were involved. So with more time, we'll be able to have conversations and be thoughtful and be able to get ahead of it, rather than trying to figure out how do we fit it together in a shorter period of time. So I am excited about this, because I feel like it's going to be able to help me be a better policymaker, a better legislator. The power of the purse is our, one of our most significant powers as a legislative body, so I am excited about good governing, and I'm excited about additionally the opportunity to engage community in additionally a more thoughtful way as well. So thank you for all your work on this, Councilmember Palmisano, as well as the team who has pulled it together, including Mr. Intermill. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments or discussion? Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate your work on this, and I think I started off much more skeptical than I am. I think you've made some really good arguments, and I think what we've heard from staff are suggestive of this being, you know, something that might be worth a try. But I'll say, the thing that gives me pause, and the thing that makes me want to make sure that we are cautious about moving into this, is actually the thing you said in your first bullet point, which is that people sure do care about the budget. And I think there's something a little counterintuitive to me about taking the thing that people sure do care about and doing it half as often. If that's, when the stakes are high enough that people do come into City Hall and do pay attention, and we are getting that level of engagement, I'm worried that they won't be as engaged in the evaluation process. I'm worried that they won't be as engaged in the sort of more thoughtful, reflective in-between year, and that we lose some opportunities to have City Hall packed with people and have us more in interaction with people who are engaged, who do feel like the stakes are high enough. So I'm going to be very interested in sort of how we can make sure that that evaluative process is engaging enough that we're not losing some of the energy that people do put into City Hall and some of the ways that people are drawn into this. So I think for me, that's the thing that gives me pause, but I also think there are some very strong arguments for us being able to do better work, and really appreciate the way you've put this together. So thank you, Councilmember Palmisano.
Councilmember Gordon. Thank you, and I'm not going to talk too long about it at this point, but I just want to share that I think we think of this as our budget and as our money, but I think this is really a big deal, and this is the money that belongs to the residents of our city and the taxpayers, and I can't imagine letting this be changed without it going to the ballot.
Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just since my previous comment was more procedural, I do, I am very open to this conversation and also appreciate the work of staff and Councilmember Palmisano. I think there are a lot of advantages that we've heard, but I think it is important to keep in mind, and I think Councilmember Gordon alluded to some of this, that, you know, our budget, our time here, is what we make of it. And so a biennial budget could be, could have all of the advantages that were described, including better assessment and more thoughtfulness and more reflection of our shared values as policymakers. It could also be something that gets forgotten a bit and doesn't allow the accessibility and transparency that we currently have. I also have seen in my relatively short time, five years on the council, that our budget is the time when we see the most diversity in public comment, often in an entire year. And we're starting to see increased participation and increased involvement, and I want to make sure as well that we don't lose that, either in our budget or overall. And so, you know, it's what we make of it. If we had the commitment ongoing and had an assurance that future councils and future mayors would have that same shared commitment, you know, I think that would address some of those concerns, and I'm not sure how we'd do that. And so perhaps it is looking at policy change related to, you know, related that any policy change we made includes those commitments to public involvement, that includes commitments to public hearings, specific ways of engaging community in assessment. So I think there are ways that we could think about it, and I'm sure staff has thought about it more than I just did. But it really is what we make of it, and again, so we are here now in a short period of time, so some of the question is, how much are we planning for the long term versus the short term, and what are the best ways to do that? We're a very active administration. We have a very active set of policymakers that are doing a lot, but that isn't always the case. So I think we need to make sure that we have those safeguarded in place that our constituents have a way of engaging and being here. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Frye.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, for the opportunity to speak. Thank you, council members.
Councilmember Pomassano, thank you so much for all of your work on this endeavor. I do think it's an important one, and I'm most definitely for the shift. And as many mayors and councilmembers have said before, the budget is the most pure reflection of our goals and our priorities as a city. And when we're perpetually in a cycle of building a budget, we miss out on the opportunity to continuously improve and refine it. And that's true for both the council, that's true for the mayor, and that's true for staff. I know that as soon as we get done putting together and then passing, and you all pass a budget in December, within maybe a month of time, staff then begin working on the next year's budget. Now, somewhere in the range of, I mean, a huge percent, in fact, the vast majority of the budget, as you know, is set for the most part on an annual basis. It doesn't change. It's the small increments that ultimately we have that vigorous discussion around, and I fully anticipate that vigorous discussion continuing on an annual basis in the form of a supplemental budget. So we're either passing the biannual budget or we're passing a supplemental budget. Both will get discussion, both will have debate, and both will ultimately have engagement. So I don't think that engagement will suddenly drop dramatically because we make this shift. What I do think will go up dramatically is staff's time to work with policymakers to determine what kind of budget they want, and policymakers' ability to work with each other to figure out what kind of budget they want. But I think both Council President, as well as Councilmember Cunningham, mentioned the value of being able to kind of work together collaboratively to figure something out so we're not kind of doing it last minute. I think that this would lend itself to that, not to mention it would give staff more time to give really valuable information. So this is really not, in my mind, a substantive policy change at all. It's a good governance proposal that will be good for the residents of our city. It's a good governance proposal that I believe that we should adopt, and I do think it's our job to make these process-oriented decisions, not, you know, pass the buck to the public. And I believe we should make this decision. It's one that, again, you know, Councilmember Gordon accurately stated that this is the people's budget, and the people's budget from a substantive standpoint doesn't change whether it's annual or biannual. What it does do is give us the time and the space and the ability to make the right decisions that will better improve our use of these funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pomassano?
If I may, Madam Vice President, I just wanted to point out that one of the changes coming before you on Friday does, is cognizant of some of my colleagues' comments here, and it is about making changes to the supplemental process change and how not just the mayor, but also city council have that power in a supplemental year to make that change. I think that shifts how a few of my colleagues are thinking. Another one, if to be dispassionate about this and read a lot and do a lot of analysis on the research. There are advantages and disadvantages of any sort of process change. One of the things that I think can make Minneapolis's model successful and something we have to lean on is our already flat structure of government. So when we talk about preserving the opportunities for input, many of the other cities that have gone to biennial processes that are maybe more smaller cities, they don't have the Board of Estimate and Taxation, they don't have a separate Park Board, they don't, they aren't as fully considered, and they don't have a 13 councilmember full-time complement to really work on this kind of stuff every year. So I feel that the Minneapolis model could do different and could really make the, any negatives of the perception of a biennial process, it could really ameliorate that. I think that an opportunity to look at 100% of our budget every two years far outweighs an opportunity to look at what becomes more like 10% to 20% of our budget over those two years. And that's where I land on how we spend our time, year to year, in budgeting. And I think that's the opportunity that sits before us. I don't, I would be willing to have this conversation with the public if it comes to that, but on a personal note, I think my British spouse would strongly caution against referendums in a representative democracy from his own personal experience, and this is something about how we do our work here and work to include the public or not. So to me, that's why this makes more sense as an amendment by ordinance than as a referendum at this point in time. But again, I'm still listening. So thank you for the time. There's no action with this. Madam Vice President, this will come as a substitute motion on Friday, this language to go to that next step. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments, discussion? With that, I move to receive and file this update. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. That item carries, and with that, there is no, oh, I'm sorry. We do need to do the reports of our standing committees on matters that will be considered before the full council. And our regular meeting this coming Friday will begin with the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. Given by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
You're back from agenda setting.
Back from agenda setting. The EDRS committee is bringing seven items forward for approval. They include a couple of liquor license approvals, as well as the regular gambling, liquor, and business license approvals. The main item of discussion in our committee is the Upper Harbor Terminal issue, approving the concept plan. You'll note that there are a number of changes that have been offered by Councilmembers Cunningham and Ellison. They are listed on the agenda below, and I would ask that if you have any questions or comments, you speak to either of them prior to the meeting. I would just say that if anyone thinks they're going to bring something to the council meeting without talking to these two authors, you will find us to not be happy about that. And so after a huge amount of work by these council members, out of respect for their work, I would ask you to talk to them if you have any further comments or changes. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions? I will be taking over chair temporarily until Council Vice President gets back. Next up, we will have the report of the Housing Policy and Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. The housing committee is just bringing forward three items. They're fairly straightforward, they were all on consent. One is just authorizing further analysis for possible TIF financing of the project where the navigation center is currently located. The other is approving an extension of Affordable Housing Trust Fund award, and the last one is approving revisions to our program guidelines for the Minneapolis Small and Medium Multifamily Loan Program.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any questions about that? All right, next up, we have the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee, which the report will be given by its vice chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much.
The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee is bringing forward four items for consideration this Friday. One is approving appointments to the Public Health Advisory Committee, and it's actually just one appointment, Mary Pike. The second is a resolution amending the Northside Green Zone Task Force to add additional voting members, including the expertise of voting members with youth-oriented experience and education. The third item is accepting a grant from the Mississippi Waterside Management Organization. And the fourth item is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health, which is fairly significant. It's $1.4 million, and this is covering a multi-year period, however. I'm happy to stand for questions, or the Chair of the committee can help answer them too, I bet.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Any questions on that? All right, next up, we have the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee with the report given by the vice chair, Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Four of the five items today that we're bringing forward are services with stadiums or arenas for either bomb detection or SWAT services that our police department provides, and the fourth is a gift acceptance for members of MPD to attend conference, and I'm happy to stand for questions on any of those items.
Thank you, Councilmember Fletcher. Are there any questions on those items? All right, seeing none. The next up is the Report of the Transportation and Public Work Committee, given by the Chair, the committee chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee will be forwarding 16 items. All items are related to bids, approval of contracts, project designation and layouts, and assessment to proceed with the work of the department for this upcoming season. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Reich. Are there any questions? All right, seeing none. Next up, we have the Ways and Means Committee report, given by its chair, Councilmember Worsame.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Ways and Means Committee has 11 items to bring forth to the full council on Friday. Item number one is a legal settlement. Item number two is a collective bargaining agreement. Item number three is the 2019 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization. Item number four is the 2019 Local Board of Appeal and Equalization appointments. Item number five is a grant from the State Historic Preservation Office for the Streetcar Commercial Building. Item number six is a capital long-range improvement committee appointments. Item number seven is 2020 to 2024 capital budget process information and net debt bond resource levels. Item number eight is a lease with Aggregates Industries. Item number nine is a lease with BRI 1855 IDS Center for Public Safety Relief Station during the Final Four event. Item number 10 is a bid for public service building skylights. Item number 11 is a bid for City of Minneapolis Warehouse Renovation Project, and I'm happy to answer any questions on those items.
Thank you, Councilmember Worsame. Are there any questions on that report? All right, seeing none. Next up, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee report, given by its chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Zoning and Planning Committee will be bringing forward one item for approval. It's the approval of rezoning for 1724 and 1728 Nicolette Avenue, as well as 1727 LaSalle Avenue, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Schrader. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Next up is the Executive Committee with its report, given by Council President Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two items from the Executive Committee, both are appointed positions. One is in the Health Department, an appointed position for the Director of Office of Violence Prevention, and the second is an Assistant City Clerk position, and both of these will be referred to Ways and Means next cycle if approved and forwarded by the council at our next meeting.
Thank you very much, Council President Bender. Any questions or comments on that? All right, so seeing none. With all of that, there is no further business before the committee today, so we are adjourned.